Second question, all of those in favor that be know my views and allow. Any opposed, I'd say no choice. Well, give us a good evening to each of you for take a moment to acknowledge the long time retired school board chairman and member, Mr. Jerry Harley, the man who Eric told us to have you. All right, before we go any further, I want to take a moment to say publicly, I have expressed my sentiment to the board of not being able to fulfill my role as active board chair this time due to a number of pressing obligations. I've also said to the board, let us move forward to elect a board chairman to finish out the remaining 10 month term. I was to take us to January and then after which we will be electing all new officers to the board. It's my credit, we continue to work together as a board as we seek to do the various things throughout the Chesterfield County, not only for their programs, but also for the citizens of Chesterfield County. So this time, I will entertain a nomination, who shall we have as chairman of Chesterfield County Board of Trustees?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This time, I'd like to nominate Chair Vic.
Second.
A nomination now.
We got to move first, okay?
Move if the nomination comes across.
Do we have any other set name? If not, I'm moving up, be closed on the said nomination.
Somebody is going to have to do that much.
Somebody that's going to have to close on.
I agree.
It's been moved up, because on the said name is that second.
Second.
All right, it's probably be moving second, be closed on the said name, Mr. Chad Biggs. Ready to vote?
Of course.
All of those in favor, Mr. Biggs, let it be know my views and allow.
Ah, yeah.
Any opposed? I'd say, at this time, Mr. Biggs, will you come take the gavel? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
As relates to as we move forward to continue to work together as a school given. We do have some public comments at this time, and we do have a signing up in minutes. And then, of course, we had the Moment of Silence and the Pledge of Allegiance that was moved up.
Thanks, sir. All right. Let me begin by thanking the board for your vote of confidence tonight, and I look forward to working with each one of you as we move forward for the students of Chesterfield County. We're going to back up and do the Moment of Silence and the Pledge of Allegiance because we left those off. I believe it's actually been moved, but we'll move it down so that we can get those in. So let's stand, if you would. And let's take a few moments and remember the Thomas family in Sheraw when we remember our Moment of Silence. And then we'll say our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we're going to move for our public comments. I will read the board chairman's statement. So the public participation section of the school board meeting is designed to hear comments from the public, but is limited 30 minutes so that normal business can be conducted. During this portion of the meeting, board members will listen to concerns and comments, but will not answer questions or debate issues. Each participant will be limited to five minutes and will refrain from making personal complaints about school personnel or board members. All right, the first one I have, Ms. Melissa Gaines. Bus concerns.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Melissa Gaines, and I'm here on concerns of the bus drivers. I just want to ask a quick question, did y'all get our bus driver concerns? Did y'all got those? Okay, well, we still haven't, you know, we still haven't heard anything, anything that kind of goes along with what we have been asking for. We would like to know our hourly pay rate. I could print my check, and all it has is a dollar amount. We have like, if we got overtime, there's no, no rate on that. How much am I making? I went from full time back to part time driving, but I'm driving every day, and I'm pulling doubles and all like that. So, you know, we need a breakdown of what we're getting paid. And, you know, with our medical leave and stuff like that, what is no, you don't really know what's going on. I know we were like with our bonuses, we don't get bonuses anymore because at one point you had, you couldn't miss for so many days before you get your bonus. Now, they just quit that, and I mean, if we go over so many days missed, where is that money going? I mean, it's like, I know I've only got a bonus one time because one day, at one point, I missed one day too many. So I didn't get that money. I just want to know where that money went to, okay? We've been having people that's, I mean, we shortage drivers. We've been having people that's getting hurt or sick or something, but they can go inside the building and work, but then they take them out the building because they can't drive the bus. I mean, things that's going on that we need, you know, we need some answers to. I'm just, I'm sorry, I just got this paper because the girl that was going to speak, she was late getting here because her bus don't getting in until five o'clock. So she was late getting here, and I was trying to read over some things, but we got a lot of drivers that are quitting. I mean, we don't, Chesterfield kind of can't afford that. We need our drivers. I mean, I think really my job, I was looking at the news the other day, some driver after about six o'clock had an accident. I'm saying that's too late for anybody to be on the road. I mean, somebody crossed the center line and hit her, and she went out in the woods. Thank God she's all right, but that's just too, too late for people to be on the road. I mean, and, you know, it's like, it's making it hard on the ones that's trying to do their job because we got so much extra to do without getting any extra compensation. We just really tired of that, you know? You know, and then it's like following the chain of command. We are trying to do what's right, but when you go to the people you think that know what to do, we get no answers. I mean, it's really like we're just beating dead horse. We are really tired of, you know, just nobody hearing what we need or what we want. I mean, we've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and it's nothing done. I mean, you know, the 1% raise, I mean, and the $500 one-time bonus across the board, that was for everybody. We here for the bus drivers. You know, I thank God that everybody got it, but the bus drivers definitely lead it. I mean, we out early in the mornings. We are carrying precious cargo. If you think your children are not precious, we are handling a lot of kids. I mean, it's different from being in a school where you can turn and face the kids. We got them all behind us. We can't see, we can't, we can't just like, too much is going on, and we trying to protect your children. You know, getting out this early, driving, and it's like, oh, well. We need to be compensated for that, you know? And it's like you get with special needs, you know, getting somebody to ride along with them, okay? Sure, that's two people you're going to have to pay, but they need that extra. They need that extra. I mean, going back for some years, you know, when we first started coming here, we had a situation that one of our really, really dedicated special needs drivers was fired because an incident happened on his bus that he had no control over. It's like you can't pull those buses up over and just jump up and do, you got certain things you got to do. You got certain, certain things you got to follow. So it's a lot that we, I don't think it's a lot we asking for. What we asking for, to me, is fair, is reasonable, and we are not getting that. I mean, I know there's a lot of things on here that I'm not, I'm kind of missing, but I'm trying to hit everything I could hit. And I thank you for your time.
Ms. Gaines, thank you. We appreciate your comments tonight, and I assure you, we will be looking into those issues for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time, Mr. Nibbins, we invite you to the podium, sir.
On this past Saturday, I had an opportunity to meet this nice white lady and her husband. And I bring up the fact that she's white for a reason. We got into a conversation, and she was telling me about her concerns with the politics here in Chesterfield. And there was a phrase she used more than once that caught my attention. But I was fine with it because it put me on the track to say what I have to say this evening. She said, your people, meaning my people, referring to race and how we vote. Unfortunately, for her, she don't know my people. I'm made of many people. With that being said, my granddaughter, a nine-year-old black girl, was mistreated in every meaning of the word. A white principal at Jefferson Elementary made that black nine-year-old girl get on her hands and knees with a toothbrush and made to scrub the dirty public restroom floor. That white principal was placed on administrative leave. One morning after the principal being on administrative leave, some of the white employees formed a mob there in front of the entrance at Jefferson Elementary. On that morning, let me back up. That mob had formed in support of that white principal. On that morning when that black girl got to school, her mother took her, she had to make her way through a white mob. A white mob, remind me of, when was it, 1958, I think it was. There was another black girl who had to make her way through a mob, a white mob. This is 2022, not 1958. Yet it seems there's still a bunch of George Wallaces around here and a bunch of bull coners, maybe even in this room, maybe even up on this board. That was not enough. The child wanted to go to the restroom. And this was another day, and the teacher scolded my, that little black girl who's my granddaughter, scolded her and punished her for taking longer than two minutes to go to the restroom and come back. I don't know about how long it take everybody else to go to the restroom, but I would imagine whatever you're going to do, that's your business, but I hope you would wash your hands at least two minutes. This superintendent, he has no problem with that. Oh, this is what that teacher does. This is what that teacher does. And he said that to me before his assistant superintendent. This is what that teacher does. Well, if I'm not mistaken, I don't care what your policy might be, but I know what the law says, and it becomes discrimination and harassment unless you time every child in your school district. Not just one, not just one. Not just one, not just one class, not just one teacher. You might need to look at Title 63, Chapter 7 of South Carolina laws. And it'll tell you the laws that have been made to protect our children. It got to the point that the parents of this black girl had to remove her from one school to another school. Meanwhile, that principal, that white principal, it still works here in this school district, yet they moved her to another school and yes, they changed her job capacity. That's not good enough. That little black girl, you all might be gone to another place or retired or whatever. That black girl, eventually, as long as this lady remains in this school district, that black girl chances of coming across that former white principal is at hand. And it's your, all of you, especially the superintendent's fault that it's like this. And this is not the first complaint, but there's one common denominator in all the complaints since this man has been employed here. And even you all giving him an extended contract. He's a common denominator of every doggone complaint that I've seen come up in this room when it comes to students, students. And that's why you're here. You're here for the students. The students are not here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Nibbins. We appreciate it. All right, board members, you have been given the minutes prior to the meeting. So, this time I'll receive a motion to accept them as the approved minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let them all say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it is unanimous. All right, at this time, we've got a special recognition for one of our fellow former board members, Mr. Wesley Miles. So, we'll ask him to come up if you would at this time. So, Mr. Miles has served 16 years, I believe it was, on the school board. Is that correct? Right at 16? From 2006 to 2022, and then from 2017 to 2022, you served as chairperson. So, we certainly want to recognize you for your service. We certainly know what it's like to serve on the school board, as you well do. And so, we're presenting you this, Mr. Miles, in a grateful appreciation for your years of outstanding service and devotion to Chesterfield County and to this school district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. I would like to speak and say a little something while I leave. You know, I reflect back on I thought like a little bit further than this right here, 2006. In 1998, I remember a lady came to me and said, "I have two little children." I think my two always were six. I wasn't planning on getting emotional, but she said she was retired, goddess counselor from Central High School. She was a maids' counselor. She said, "The advisory board, I did something for her. I went down to her church and hung a picture or something for her, Ms. Joanne Miller." And she said, "We have an opening on advisory council Jefferson, and that's if you get involved with that with the children, the children's school." And back then it was elected, it wasn't appointed. And so, I was elected there twice. I was serving eight years there. And then Tommy, Tommy Grant was serving in the position I was in, and that became open and I come over this, but it's been tough at times and good at times, but we do it for the kids, the children. I'm thankful for the time I had over here. And I ain't emotional, but I was trying to get over this, but serving with all the different people over here. I think when I came over here, Mr. Sweeney was over here, Chad was over here when we got here. I think the rest just came on. Me and Kim and, me and Kim and Ms. Linda, we all came on at the same time. That's what I told her a while back, it's young be claiming, and she's still here. And, you know, Linda, you know, it's one of the things, we had two people while I was on this board that passed away, Mr. Porter, Mr. Porter, Councilor Porter, and Linda. And, you know, we went through ups and downs, but at the end of the day, y'all want to see it better, you want to, can. And, you know, financially, our district is better today than it was when I came here. And it's not from all of these people here. Mr. Holly and different people that served in our administration and Brad, him just helped us get these paid down our debt. You know, I remember we was getting down, we didn't have, like my million-dollar Holly in the fund balance, unassigned fund balances, Brad would say, they ain't all cash, but we've gotten up to 10 million, but we did give back to our people this year. So, we went nine last year, went up to 10. We said we was gonna give back to our people. We did that. And we give the bonuses and give 1%, and we still are in good shape. And I think we're definitely in better shape. But, you know, I know the academics is the hard thing, but it's all over the country. We're always facing, we're always gonna be facing something. And that's something that's we face right now with all these kids that's been out of school and it's hurt the kids and, you know, that's the focus point now, that's where y'all at. And I appreciate everyone that I work with. I hope the best for you. And, you know, next person gets in my seat, I hope continues to strive for kids. I think.
Thank you. And we probably should thank your wife and our spouses. I got it.
Thank her for letting me allow me to be a servant. I appreciate all the service from the board. And if you don't allow, I'm gonna probably hang out there.
That's the new luxury you got. I think this is the second or third Valentine's I spent with this board. Again, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Goodwin, and he's gonna discuss our school calendar and the report and the information that they've gathered over the last few weeks concerning our school calendar.
Members of the board, as you know, we had two different calendar options that we placed out for our teachers and also for our community members to give input on. The one calendar is very traditional calendar, in fact, looks almost identical to this year's calendar. It does provide some breaks in February and March, which I think my wife is my biggest influence on that. She says kids and staff need a break in February and March, but it contained that. We also put out what is referred to in our state now, a new type of calendar. It's called a modified balanced year calendar. The difference with that calendar is there are two intercession weeks, one in October, one in March, late February, early March, gives us a time to do academic remediation and to help students. It is exempt from the uniform start date of the third week in August, the third Monday in August, so it does allow you to start earlier, which allows you to put those weeks in. The other thing about the modified balanced is, is that you're able to finish first semester before Christmas. We put the information out and not only did we take, you know, counts of information from the public, but we also took emails directly and monitored our social media accounts. The votes among staff were extremely close. In fact, the closest it's ever been, it was almost split down the middle. The results from the community were a little more skewed toward the modified balanced than the staff votes were. And, but one of the things that kept coming through in comments that we received was for August of '22, I have made reservations for that first week and the kids would be starting, or I'm a staff member and I would be starting the last week in July and I've already paid the deposit on this vacation and that vacation. So, with that, we wanted to take a look at that and take that into account. In addition, though, we also wanted to take into account what goes on in the districts around us because we do share a lot of families that work in different districts and those kinds of things. And we did share from the beginning that Darlington and Kershaw had adopted the modified balanced calendar. So, basically, when we look at what's going on in our region as well as the state, with this being so close, I would really like for us to take into account those staff members and those community members who made the comments about summer '22. And I would, the administration would be recommending that we take a play, out of the playbook of some other districts and say that we would stick with a traditional calendar this year, but go ahead and direct administration, ask you to direct us along the teacher forum to draft a modified balanced calendar for the '23-'24 school year and go ahead and publicize the general start and end dates, maybe not all the stuff in the middle, but so as people enter this summer, they can plan for summer of '23. I think that that would be the responsive path to take, given the feedback we got. I do feel good about the traditional calendar. I feel very good about it. I do wish that we could have incorporated the intercession weeks because I think remediating throughout the year is more effective than only remediating during the summer, but I certainly also am sensitive to the folks who have had that. So, Mr. Chair and board members, the recommendation of administration would be that we adopt the traditional calendar this year and that if you see so fit to direct us to begin work on the '23-'24 school year calendar. Last thing I would add before there's any discussion, Kershaw and Darlington both have already put out draft calendars for '23-'24, so we would actually be coming in line with doing the next year out like they're already doing.
Okay, prior to discussion, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, motion has been properly made and seconded. Is any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
At least one. This calendar was, teacher forum held this calendar like they've been doing in the past.
Teacher forum has input each year in the calendar and teacher forum and administration works together. Yes, sir.
I know that in the past, the teacher forum has been bringing this to our attention. And I was just curious to know whether they were involved in it.
Yes, sir. They were involved and I did, I did bring it tonight myself because it is a rather complicated change in the direction if we move in forward years to the balance modify.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor of the said motion, let them all say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it is unanimous. Okay, at this time, we'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Willard, for our January monthly review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
You've been given the January information prior to the meeting. Be happy to take any questions or notate any comments on that review.
Any questions for Mr. Willard? Hear none?
Okay. One thing I will mention, Mr. Chair, since we now have a slate of officers, our forward refunding of the 2012 bonds will take place on March 1st, and our attorneys will be finalizing those closing documents now with the current slate of officers, and I'll be in touch with you for signatures on that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent Personnel, Dr. Anderson, for our personnel exhibits.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at this time, I'd like to recommend the following exhibits for your approval, Exhibits A through E.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a proper second. Any discussion? All in favor of the said motion, let them all say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and it is unanimous. All right, now for COVID update, sir.
Just a brief update, COVID update, looking at, I'm gonna get started here, looking at the last four weeks, Week 20 through 23. We're looking at, here we go, the overall data for Week 20, which was the week of January 10th. And what we'll see pretty much throughout these past three weeks is that Week 20, the week of January 10th, and the week of January 18th, Week 21, were the highest two weeks out of the four. Week three still has some high numbers, as you see overall here, but then Week 23, they began to go down some. So, we'll see that reflected as we move forward here. With the staff positives, I want to, when we look at our staff positives, we see that our staff positives have went up over the last few weeks, again, Week 20, 21, and 22, really a tribute to that, it's at 22.2. Our student positives pretty much reflected the same. And again, we're talking about averages. Our staff quarantines and isolations, they went down, but still a little higher than we, obviously, we've had in the past. And then our student quarantines slash isolations, they went up in comparison to the previous four weeks, but they pretty much fell between the first four weeks, the first eight weeks of the school year. So, up in comparison to the previous four weeks, but kind of in the middle of the first eight weeks of school. Looking at our daily highs, we had, we did have daily highs, 84 student positives in one day, Week 20, 21, 20, I think that was Week 21. We actually had 16 staff positives as well in one day, Week 21. And then looking at our weekly highs, same thing is reflected, okay? Again, Week 20, 21, and 22 primarily increased our averages, and then last week, they did go down some.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Dr. Anderson? Ms. Sweeney?
I have one.
Okay, one second, please. Ms. Sweeney?
A couple of things. What is the CDC guideline now when students tested for the virus? And number two, are we having real issues? I know we having some issues, but are we having real issues getting substituted to teach those kids?
Repeat the first question, Ms. Sweeney?
The CDC guidelines now. That's the first question.
What are they?
Yeah.
So, actually, as of yesterday, we've got the latest DHEC slash CDC guidelines, referring to, specifically referring to and outlining the test to stay guidelines, which means at this point, K through, K5 through 12, that a student or staff member that tests positive, last week it was actually just students, but now with students and staff that test positive, they still quarantine five days, okay? And then they can go test, obviously. can go test, obviously. If they test negative, they return with a mask through day 10. Household contacts, in that, in this event, with staff and students, if they come in contact, obviously household contact or come in contact, they can, instead of quarantining, they can actually come to school, wear a mask, test on day five through day seven. And if they test negative, they can, they can continue in school, obviously, or at work with a mask. But if they test negative, if they test positive, they'll have to quarantine for five days and fall under that particular category. So, but it's, it's just constantly shifting. As a matter of fact, because of the new test to stay, we, it won't, it won't be accurate for us to, all that I've shared with you all this year, from week one through week, our current time, I, I can't, I won't be able to compare those metrics next time I stand before you. We have to start, we have to start something different, because the definite, the terms have changed, quarantining, and the test to stay really, has really thrown things off. So I have a report, but we won't be able to compare it by weeks as we have in the past.
Second part of my question was AIDS. How are we doing with AIDS? Whenever we have three, four, five teachers out, understand that we're having some issues getting maybe folks in, into the school system?
I, I missed the last part.
How are we doing with AIDS that's coming into our school system when someone is tested positive? I understand that we're having some issues maybe finding folks who really want to come in.
You're talking about subs?
Yes, subs.
Okay, okay.
Yes, subs.
Yeah, uh, you know, the unfortunate reality is, from district to district around us, and obviously our district, we are struggling with subs. We're struggling, I mean, we were struggling with subs prior to COVID. Now it's just been intensified. So yes, it's a reality. We're, we're struggling.
Okay, Dr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, actually, Dr. Anderson, this is a question probably better for, um, Ms. Folsom, but it's related to these, I see you got 443 kids out, week 20 through 23?
Okay.
When those, those students go out for COVID, are they giving the laptops and internet capability being checked until they come back off quarantine?
Yes. I'm, I'm looking at her, and she's agreeing as well, but yes.
Okay. And that's always from the elementary up through high school?
Yes, sir. We are, we are making provisions and accommodations to help children get all of their work, so that they can stay out of the quarantine.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sweeney, did I answer your question? Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Teal?
Now, our, um, teachers I know can, our staff can be tested on Tuesdays here and Powell Learning Center on Thursday. Is that correct? Students?
Students and staff, yes, sir.
Students and staff, okay. Can be tested here on Tuesdays, and PLC in Chesterfield on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hear none. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll call our Executive Director of Curriculum, Ms. Folsom, for our curriculum report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy Valentine's Day.
Same to you.
I'd like to highlight a few items that are in your curriculum report. I want to highlight First Steps has been awarded a collaborative grant along with our district to implement Parent Child Plus. It is an evidence-based home visiting program to serve families with children 18 months to 48 months. The program model specifies that early learning specialist and a site coordinator will serve families once their training has completed. We have three learning specialists. They will be serving the Sheraw, Pageland, and Chesterfield Ruby areas. We have a site coordinator that will also be overseeing all of their visits. These visits will encourage parents to put their child on the path to school readiness. Each week, they will be going in the homes, taking books and toys, and working with parents with these educational toys and books. And once they've completed the program, the learning specialist will work to ensure that these children are enrolled in a quality preschool program, which is the next critical step in their education. I also want to highlight that we have our academic tutoring and assess, and assistance up and running for middle and high schools. We are offering tutoring after school Mondays through Thursdays. Principals have identified teachers and have schedules advertised on their websites, and they're sending that information home. We have had quite a few students that are taking advantage of that. I also want to highlight what we've got going on in instruction, in our informational technology. Our 165 Promethean panels, carts, and Chrome boxes arrived this month, and they are getting those into classrooms. Teachers are very excited about that. Also, Encore Technology Group has started the process of getting our new wireless overlay project updated. This project provides upgraded wireless access points to all of our 16 schools. One other thing I want to mention is that we have partnered with a company called Linewise, and we are excited about the new software that we are able to use. One of the items is called Netref that enables our teachers to be able to see what students are doing on their Chromebooks. If there's an issue, they can, they can shut that Chromebook down if they need to. We also have a product called Linewise, which actually kind of monitors what students are doing, what type of messaging they're using, what they're writing about, or what they're searching about on the internet, and it gives notice to principals, as well as if they feel like that it is dangerous enough, or it's, it's critical enough, they will actually make a call to that school to let administration know what is going on. Any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Yes, question, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Folsom, with academic tutoring and assistance, is that in all of our schools?
It's in all of our middle and high schools. We have a lot of interventions set up in our elementary schools that happen during the day, and we have found that transportation is an issue a lot of times for our elementary students to stay after school. So we have really targeted middle and high school. We find that it has been more beneficial to, to have an after-school program for those grade levels.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Folsom, thank you for your review tonight.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Goodwin, for his report for us.
And my report will be very simple, as upcoming calendar reminders, this Friday, February 18th, schools are closed. That was a flex day for the two late days that our folks were. And then Monday, the 21st, is President's Day holiday, so all facilities will be closed. And we'll have another weekend like that also in March to give folks a nice long weekend to catch a breath.
One thing I would like to ask you to do.
Ms. Sweeney?
Um, this question, this superintendent, one is, I need a list of all of the sports of each of our high schools and middle schools, and what a contribution that the district makes to each sport, or what school, what contribution it made to each sport. Another item that I wanted you to look into is that I have gotten some requests about a soccer team at Central High School. And actually, I thought that that was one in all of our high school, but I found out that we just only had one, one soccer team period. But that has been a concern. So we need to look into that, because I know we have a high Hispanic population, and that's, that's their number one sport. And I don't know about it in the Mackey area, but I would think that it'll be the same here. So look at the possibility of, uh, establishing a soccer team, uh, at Central, and maybe at Mackey High, too.
When you say contribution, you're talking about a budget item?
Yeah, budget item, yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, I just know that some of the schools are struggling with financing terms of financing their team. And I don't know what we're doing district-wise.
That's all you have? Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent? Why he's here?
Why he's here?
Why he's here? I didn't mean it like that. All right, for the chairman comment, we have moved the board meeting. As you can see, it will be March the 7th at the Powell Learning Center, beginning at 5:00 PM for the executive session and 5:30 for the regular meeting. Also, we'll remind you that March the 30th is the deadline to submit economic interest forms for each board member. It can be very costly if you do not do that, so we certainly want to remind you of that. Even if you do do it, keep your receipt. They called me this year and said I didn't do mine, but thank goodness I did still have my receipt showing that I actually did last year, completed. We also want to thank Ms. Cobwell for your hospitality tonight. Thank you to your staff at Mackey High School. We certainly appreciate the hospitality that you've shown us tonight to have in our meeting here. So thank you so much for that. At this time, I entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. All in favor of the said motion, let them all say an aye. All opposed, like sign. And we thank you for attending tonight.